If we may, please stand for the pledge. Dr. Muspa, would you appear to lead us? Doc, you care at least. Please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Personnel and student achievement recognition. Dr. Stewart?
We are gonna start with our young writers. So, Ms. Juan Street. We had quite a few participants in our young writers contest this year and it was very enjoyable to read their essays. I will start with the age group of grades, first grade through second grade. Ezekiah Arnold from Leading Creek is our winner and he's a second grader in Debbie Moss's classroom. Is Ezekiah here? But congratulations for him. In grades three and four, Ashlyn McCormick from Leading Creek was our winner and she is in Mrs. Stoudt's classroom at Leading Creek. So, congratulations to Ashlyn. And our fifth through sixth grade, Phi Duncan was our winner at Robert L. Bland Middle School. This is a sixth grader in Carmen Schaefer's classroom. And then we also had participants in the seventh, eighth grade category and our winner in the seventh, eighth grade class category was an eighth grader at Robert L. Bland Middle School, Adely Ware. Come and get your...
You know what I'm saying?
Good job. Thank you for all the people who participated and helped our students in this. Congratulations. Alright, next up, Mrs. Lambert.
You gotta bind her.
Alright, as you can tell this evening, we have a full health here from Lewis County High School. It has been a very exciting time this year and you're probably gonna see us quite a bit over the next couple of meetings as there's a lot to celebrate at Lewis County High School. So, I don't know if I will necessarily follow what's on the board. I may follow what's in front of me and the way I have it here. But the first group of athletes I would like to recognize are Landon Bush and Jacob Hardbarker from our wrestling team. Landon finished sixth in the state at the state wrestling meet. And Jacob had his first state appearance as a freshman. So, great things ahead here. So, congratulations to Landon and Jacob. Great job, that's... Alright, next up, as we continue, great things ahead. Every year, our students participate in all-state band and there are three different levels to band. The mountaineer band is the highest achievement that you can get and this year, we had three students obtain that honor. Those students are Maisy Corley, Rosalyn Skinner, and Wes Palmer. If those students can come up now. There you go. So, they're continuing on. So, congratulations to those students. We had one student who earned honors in the blue band, which is the second highest band accomplishment, and that is Jack Kyle. Is Jack here? Lessons. There you go, 'cause we're continuing to work. I would also like to say, and we will be recognizing Rosalyn later in this year, but Rosalyn has continued to earn some achievements and Maisy has two. So, we'll be seeing them here in the next coming weeks as well. We also had, in the area four competition, we had a one-act competition that had three students earn honors. So, we had Daniella... Close, Daniella, I'm close, as close as I can be. But Daniella actually earned the honor of distinguished actor. So, come on up, Daniella. We had Reagan Plurson, who earned All Festival Cast, and Nathan Barnes, who also earned All Festival Cast, if they are here. But congratulations to those students. Great job. And they'll be competing at the end of the month, correct? I believe, I think they may be going or possibly Mr. Sekman said we may go one more time to compete. So, congratulations. Is Daniella my only one here from this group? Okay, congratulations to those, to those students. You're welcome. Alright, next up, we continue on our Minutemen football. And I know I saw Coach Koger and his staff somewhere around here. So, if the coaching staff can come on up. And I think most of the, many of them are here. There we go, to the coaching staff. There we go. Here we go. Alright, so, first of all, I'm gonna give accolades to our coaching staff because they had a great season and made it to the first round of the playoffs. A very cold, snowy, icy, rainy, you name it, it happened to us playoff game. But I would like to say thank you and job well done to our coaching staff and to our players who are back there, who once again made us proud as we made it to the first round of the state playoffs. So, it was a great season to them. So, with that being said, we have certificates of recognition. Coach Koger, is there anything you'd like to add? Thank you. I appreciate that. Alright, so Eli Jones. And boy, I think what we'll do, we'll just have you line up this way. That way they can get a big team picture. Garrett Moats. Oh, baseball, yep. Isaac Pickens. Aiden O'Daker. JP Alkayer. Hunter Palmer. Nick Bennett. I like how you guys can do this so fast. Trey Parker. Aiden Andering. Devon Bellamy. Ian Brown. James Young. Cam Goldsmith. Alex Goodwin. Blake Watson. Owen A... Paxton Cochran. Bird Cammer. No Pax, no Luke, okay. Leo Jones. Dalton Hurley. Gavin Bailey. Nathan Palmer. Jackson Koger. Madison Gillespie. Jacob Hardbarger. Garrett Smith. Isaac Chris Look would be at baseball. Xander Loudon. Grayson Grog. Stephen Gross. Brayden Riddle. Landon Fisher. Nathan Rexrode. Daner Groves. Oh, behind Garrett. Garrett McCourtney. Tucker McCourtney. Noah Rittenhouse. Peyton Pickens. Okay, alright, so that is our football team and a great job for their season. Next up, we would like to recognize our cheer team, who were the region two champs and also finished fourth place in the state competition. So, a great season for our cheerleaders. So, if we could have them come forward. Lilly Garten. Lilly here? No? Okay. Sidney Pearson. Nora Flynn. Kiara Weaver. Katie Smith. Brynlee Wilson. Bella Parker. Gabby Conrad. Emma Garrett. Sidney Chips. Hayden McDonald. Sloane Jeffries. Vivian Abrego. Jaden Bailey. Kirsten Lips. And this is our cheer team for the 24-25 season. Great job, ladies. Can you look this way? There we go. Thank you very much. Alright, next up, we have our girls' basketball program. So, if the coaching staff who is here for girls' basketball could come up. Cheer team coaches, could you please come up for a second? I totally missed you all. They're hiding in the back, just in case you didn't see them. They're there. There they are. This is our coaching staff for a great season that they had. So, we'll give them a round of applause. So, thank you for a job well done, ladies, as well. You're welcome. I don't know what I was thinking on that one there. Alright, so coaching staff, as we know, for the girls' basketball season, region champs, and of course, made it to the state playoffs as well this season. So, with that, we have Peyton Goodwin. Softball, that's, that's right. Eliza Bush, probably volleyball. Kira Vincent, track. Palin Hinkle. Ella Pigney. There we go. Alexis Pajet. Daniella? What color did Daniella be? Bren Hunt. Mackenzie would be tennis. Mackenzie would be at tennis. Shirley Lor. Adely Curry would be softball. Kenley Wymer. Come on up. There we go. This, these are our ladies representing girls' basketball this evening. So, give them a big round of applause for... Alright. Okay. Boys' basketball. Coaching staff? Our boys' basketball made it to the region two championship at RCB. It was a heartbreaker, but they played a great game and had a great season. And with that being said, if I can get the clip off, here we go. Manny Robinson. Lucas Mudispa. Helen Bruffy. Xander Carlton. Caleb Piscassio. Jesse Kemper. Josiah Heine. Ben Cunningham. Joel Good. Caleb McKee. Madison Gillespie. Robert Fur. Kyle Hayhurst. Victor Tring. Brant Conrad would be at baseball. Hayden Brown. Wes Smith. Yandel Zavala. Sam Benedem. Branson Satterfield. There we go. And these guys will represent us this evening for boys' basketball and a job well done. Alright. Ben, can you hold that up real quick for a picture, please? Alright. And I believe that is everything from us. So, thank you guys for a great season and some outstanding achievements.
Dr. Stewart, do we have any student discipline academics?
There are none for either.
Okay. Moving on, delegations.
There are no delegations this evening.
Family resource network, please.
Alright, thanks for having me. That's a tough act to follow, all those amazing kiddos. I know. I talked to his parents. He's at Wesleyan this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Palmer.
Sure thing. Alright, thanks for having me. A couple of times a year, I like to come and just share some of the things going on at the FRN with you guys. I've got a lot to cover, but please jump in and ask questions. Before I get started, is there anything specifically that you wanna hear about or questions that you want addressed before I get started?
Do we still have Handle with Care?
We do, yeah, yeah. So, Handle with Care is not in here, but I'll give you the one-minute version of Handle with Care. Handle with Care was started about, I would say, eight or nine years ago. Lewis County was one of the founding counties to start Handle with Care. And it's a notification system that comes from a few different places. And what that means is that an email comes to, in Lewis County, it goes to Amanda Craig and Dr. Stewart and in the subject, it says HWC or Handle with Care and then the student's name and that's it. We get, I think fifteen or twenty a year? Okay. Alright, we're gonna jump right in. So, the FRN has more than fifty programs and projects. I'm not gonna tell you about all fifty, but if you have questions, let me know. Our mission is to strengthen and support families so that they can be the best that they can be. That means seniors who live in a single household, that means families, that means parents, that means grandparents raising kiddos. If you look at the very first sheet in your packet, it says, "What does the FRN do?" This gives kind of an overview of the types of things the FRN does. A lot of people know us as the food pantry. That's because we're the primary food pantry in Lewis County, but that's not all that we do. I try to highlight some of the things that we do with Lewis County schools. So, a lot of what we're really good at is just answering folks' questions. I tell everybody, there is nothing that's too outside the box for us. This yellow resource guide that's on the front of your packet, our main phone number is there. We get about twenty-two hundred phone calls a month. And so, a lot of this comes from Lewis County school staff. Direct and indirect service provision, working with communities and schools. If you guys haven't heard from communities and schools for a while, we have the best communities and school spots in the state by far. Grant writing, situational summer-type things, primary prevention efforts. We just sat up at all the open houses for the schools when they had parent-teacher conferences over the past couple of weeks. I'm not gonna talk too much about parent resource navigation, but I just wanted to mention that this is one of our newest programs. This is a program with West Virginia Supreme Court. Lewis County is piloting this program and it's specifically for biological parents who have open CPS cases. Parents as teachers, our primary parents as teachers office is right here across the street. But we have four other parents as teachers offices in West Virginia. Those are in Clay and Braxton County, Harrison County, and Upsher County. Backpack Buddies, this is one of the programs with Lewis County schools. When I first started the FRN ten years ago, we distributed around a hundred and twenty-five Backpack Buddies per year. When I first started the FRN ten years ago, we distributed around a hundred and twenty-five Backpack Buddies per year. Backpack Buddies are, uh, if you look at this picture in the lower right-hand corner, they're snack packs that kids get to take home on Friday that have two breakfast, two lunch, two snack, and two drink items in them. You know, ten years ago, the free and reduced lunch rate in Lewis County was like sixty percent. And so, I don't know what it is now, but it's very high. And so, we're doing around four hundred snack packs per week to Lewis County kiddos. That equates to, uh, last year was around forty thousand dollars. We expect this year it'll be about fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, by the way, Lewis County Schools does provide funding for that. I should have mentioned that. Around twenty-ish thousand, yeah, twenty or twenty-two thousand dollars a year of that fifty-five thousand comes from Lewis County schools. It's a grant. Cynthia could tell you the exact name. I cannot. We, we just pack the Backpack Buddies, we purchase all the items, and then we invoice Lewis County schools for a portion of what it costs. We're normally sending invoices for around thirty to forty percent of the total cost of what we're actually spending. Uh, Play in the Park is coming back this summer. Um, last year, we hosted eleven weeks of Play in the Park. Um, in the lower right-hand corner, this is one of my very favorite pictures of Bree Warner. Uh, she dressed up in, in an apron with a mustache on the day that the kids made pizzas. This is a really fun, um, caregiver-child interaction opportunity. She brought a chicken on a leash one day that they learned about eggs. They did swimming, they did, um, sack races, we made pizzas. Uh, we talked about, um, centering coping skills. Uh, it's a really fun time. So, we do this at Lewis County Park, and it's coming back this summer. Uh, Healthy Grandfamilies is one of, uh, our favorite programs, one of my favorites that we have. We are getting ready, in your packet, you'll see the flyer for Healthy Grandfamilies. Uh, we're getting ready to have another fam, Healthy Grandfamily session in March and April. This, let's see, we've done three of the current sessions so far, and we normally have between three and six grandfamilies that come. And so, the purpose of Healthy Grandfamilies is to talk about what does it look like to navigate raising a grandchild if it was, say, fifteen or twenty years ago that your child was in school? So, some of the topics that we cover are navigating the school system, where we always have someone from Lewis County schools come and, and talk about that. Uh, family response to addiction for substance use disorder. Technology and social media is usually one of the largest classes that we have. We also have the Health Department, NWO Extension, come and talk about nutrition and healthy lifestyles, stress management, and lots of other things. The biggest thing that we want grave families to get away, like to take away from this, is meeting each other. And creating a support group for each other so that when they leave the six or eight weeks of classes, they have phone numbers of other grandparents who are raising grandkids that they can call and talk to. Adult Life Skills and Parenting is one of our newer programs. We're currently running this through an online course called Break Course. And basically what that means is, any adult, um, that is parenting, or any adult that needs additional life skills, whether those have been court-ordered or voluntary, are taught through an evidence-based course. We, uh, we've, we're kind of trying this out for a year to see how it goes. So far, it's gone pretty well. We've also had our staff trained in nurturing parenting and Triple P, and those are all evidence-based curriculums for life skills and parenting. Uh, what we know is that just like we can't wait until kindergarten for kids to get intervention, we can't wait until there's an open CPS case to do interventions for parents. By that point, it's way too late. And so, we are piloting this for a year to see how it goes, and then I hope next time I visit, I can share some outcomes. Car seat installation and inspection. Um, you know, it used to be fifteen years ago that you could pull up to any city police station or fire department and get your car seat checked. And that's just kind of one of those things that has gone by the wayside over the years. And so, we have, uh, four car seat certified installers at every single one of our offices. We have five in Lewis County.
That training used to be in-depth. I remember nineteen years ago.
It's a whole week.
Yeah, it's for real.
So, for anybody who has ever just strapped your kid random into a car seat in the backseat, you were probably doing it the wrong way. Because that, that training is four full days, a half-day on Friday, and then you have to actually install car seats for the other half a day Friday. So, it's a full, it's a big deal. And then you have to do like three days of continuing education every single year. So, I mean, that's a big, yeah, it's a big deal. And it's expensive, so I understand why folks haven't kept it up. Um, through a partnership with Catholic Daughters, uh, Catholic Daughters in Lewis County is very active, and they provide us twenty to twenty-five car seats a year, which is really wonderful because anybody who's purchased a car seat lately, they're really expensive. Also, it's really hard to tell what kind of car seat your kiddo needs. And so, our, um, car seat types can not only determine the type of car seat, we can also ins, you know, install a brand-new car seat. Or when kiddos kind of get to that point where you can't carry them around because they're too heavy into that little carrier, and then they have to go into a permanent car seat, do lots of installs or just inspections for those. Parenting of PJs is a new program that we're trying out in partnership with the Lewis County Recovery Center. Lewis County Recovery Center, if you haven't been there, you've got to check it out. It's in Garten Plaza, uh, ironically close to the liquor store. And so, we're trying out parenting of PJs, which so far is going really well. It's with an evidence-based model called Circle of Parents, and in conjunction with the West Virginia Circle of Parents Network, we are holding twice-a-month sessions, and it's going really well. Um, we have offered, initially, or forever, folks can join the session virtually, and they can join anonymously if they want to. So, what we found is, folks aren't willing to just walk into a room this size to talk about parenting support, especially if they're in recovery. So, what we're offering is that they can join virtually, and they can join anonymously. They don't have to put their name in, they don't have to come on video. They can just join, and what we find is it takes about two or three sessions for caregivers to join anonymously with other video on, to listen in, and then they'll slowly turn their video on, give a little bit of input. And so far, we've transitioned every single person into coming in-person instead of virtually. So, again, I hope this is something that the next time I talk to you guys, we can share some outcomes. Circle of Parents is a really, uh, great evidence-based curriculum, and it is used along with the Strengthening Families Program, which is also evidence-based. Success Closet's also a new program. Um, this came from talking to lots of folks about the gigantic gap in folks who want to work and folks getting to work. And so, the Success Closet does things like helping folks build a resume for the first time. We do mock interviews. So, if anybody's interested in helping with mo, mock interviews, it's kind of a fun thing to do. Uh, but we put a panel of three to five people together and do mock interviews to ask people questions and kind of get their nerves out of the way before they go on, uh, interviews. We've provided lots of outfits. Sometimes that's scrubs, sometimes that's lots of black pants and black shoes for fast-food jobs. Um, it could be many different things. And so, this has been a really good way to make connections with people that has also brought kind of a new group of folks that we haven't worked with before. We see lots of folks transitioning out of adult education into kind of this, "What are we doing now?" phase, and so Success Closet is part of that. Um, this is the old flyer for Healthy Grandfamilies, but I just wanted to show you a list of the types of sessions that we're offering. Again, the, the technology and parenting in the twenty-first century are the ones that are the most popular. Uh, Play in the Park flyer, uh, Circle of Parents meeting. And I included all of these, uh, in your packet, the updated ones. Deal Friday is something that we're doing again this summer in awareness of, um, melanoma. And you'll also find in your packet information about sunscreen, uh, dispensers that have been installed around the county. And we're actually installing all of those again this year, plus four more that are being, um, sponsored by one of our community partners. So, we're excited about that.
I love it. I think it's great. Dr. Stewart and I tried to figure out a way that we can incorporate it in our schools.
Yeah.
Didn't have so much thought going on.
Yeah.
But I think it's fantastic.
If you ever want to brainstorm that, let us know. We also have really good connections, talking to kids about sun safety. Um, you know, most little kids, let alone teenagers, don't want to talk about sun safety, and then by the time you're talking about sun safety, it's too late. We also incorporate water safety. Um, you know, the number of droppings in West Virginia is astounding. And we, you know, so we, and we also throw in there the reminder about helmets, helmet wearing. Um, you know, one of the things that we really pride ourselves on is sharing resources in the community. That now looks like this yellow resource guide. I despise the color of this thing, by the way, but we tried to change the color, and people revolted. They're like, "This is, this is how we know what your resource guide is," because it's, you know, hazard yellow. Um, so, we now have an online resource guide. I included the QR code for that in your packet. And that's been a really nice way for us to add additional information for resources online that you can't get, you know, we can only squeeze so much text onto this little yellow front and back. Um, so, resource provision. And a couple of things I wanted to mention, and then we'll get to questions. Um, a million kudos to, um, Ryan DuVont. Every email that I send him, he replies back to, and in record time has fixed every single thing that I've asked at the building. So, of course, you know, but just a reminder, Lewis County Schools owns the primary office of the Lewis County FRN. Uh, we do ninety-nine percent, nine, ninety-nine point nine percent of all of the upkeep there. Um, we switched out all the lights, we built the awning, we take care of all the floor waxing. But there's some things that Steve Palmer or I cannot handle, and so Ryan's been really good about that, and I'm very appreciative for that. Alright, I tried to hurry through so you can ask me questions.
How about your roof? We talked about the roof last year.
Yeah.
What do we have on that?
Well, the roof's still there.
We got a bunch of them like that.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Um, it is okay right now. Um, I would say the last fix, um, was probably temporary-ish. And if, so every time it rains, I come to town to check it. But it's basically just that the, they can't really find where the leak is coming from. And so, it never leaks while it's raining. It leaks like a couple of hours later.
Do you anticipate any cuts? Have you been cut on your budget yet?
Not yet. It's coming.
Yeah, it's coming, okay.
Um, I would say, you know, we know that we're gonna take, uh, cuts from the federal cuts. Um, and that's probably gonna look, the first one, I just was in Morgantown this morning for a meeting, is probably gonna be food. Uh, USDA food cuts that have come federally, that'll be the first thing. Um, and I would say after that, probably a few economic development things. Um, otherwise, I'm really, um, thankful that we have really busted it over the past ten years to diversify our funding. Um, we've got twenty-five employees, six full-time AmeriCores, and five offices. And so, the only thing more important to me than serving the community in the way that it needs to be served, is to make sure we can do that sustainably. Anybody can create a shiny new program, but it takes hard work to make sure that something's sustainable for the long term. And so, we don't start anything unless we can sustain it. So, yet, yet to be seen how many cuts we're gonna take, and I know that they're on the way. I think the real question is how deep and what other relationships can we utilize to try to backfill those gaps?
I just have a, I just have more of a comment and not a question. First off, Deanna, you know, we all wish we didn't have to have all these programs, but our, our socioeconomics dictates that we do. And, and I want to say from my perspective, um, I appreciate, and we all should appreciate, and, and work with you as much as we can with, with your FRN. And I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that our FRN here in Lewis County has a sterling reputation throughout the state and is a shining, shining example of what FRNs should be like in West Virginia. So, kudos to you and your, uh, your staff.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and we take that really seriously. Um, you know, the fact that we can do what we do successfully hasn't come without lots of failures, and we're gonna fail lots more times. But we're not afraid to try things, and I think in the end, that means that we can do really special things for the community. It's also just hard work. Um, and so, I really appreciate this community support. I appreciate the board's support, and I'm really proud of our team. Um, they're busting it every single day, doing a myriad of different things. And I can tell you, based on the number of calls that we get from communities and schools, from counselors, from specific teachers and administrators, that a lot of Lewis County school staff share that mantra in helping kids. And people aren't afraid, you know, there are lots of folks that aren't afraid to message and say, "Hey, I have no idea what to do about this thing, but I know we need to do something." And so, that's what we're good at, is being able to brainstorm those things. So, I appreciate that, and I'm proud of that, and I take it seriously.
I noticed that you all have, uh, got you a van. Out there to transport food and stuff.
Yeah.
And so, you've expanded, you know,
We have, yeah.
That in there, and I want to compliment you on that. That's a, you all do a lot of good for the community, you really do.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We have expanded. Um, don't tell anybody we've got a van because everybody wants us to do transportation, and we're not there yet, but we are working on that. I'm just kidding. But we are using, we are using the bus right now to do food transportation. So, thanks for mentioning that. That was a big, you know, those are big purchases for us, um, and it's a big deal. And so, for us to be able to do delivery of items, and for us to be able to go places like World Vision and pick up things and bring them back instead of making three trips in my vehicle is a big deal. So, yeah, thanks for mentioning that. And we're not hauling people yet, so we're, we'll get there.
The volunteer group that, uh, that builds the beds?
Yeah.
I, I saw they were looking for a larger space for, for store. Had they found anything yet, or?
So, uh, so don't tell anybody. Uh, but we're taking, uh, we're taking over Sleep in Heavenly Peace in Harrison and Lewis Counties. And so, um, we're going for training. You have to go to Lehigh, Utah to learn how to make beds for Sleep in Heavenly Peace. So, uh, four folks from our team are going there at the end of April, and we are looking for larger space. Um, we have warehouse space in Clarksville that is super nice. And we don't want our Lewis County volunteers to have to continue to drive to Clarksville to pick up beds. Uh, we've installed about a hundred and ten beds in Lewis County, and so Sleep in Heavenly Peace is a, I don't like the name. It sounds like a funeral home, by the way. But we didn't make the name, so, um, but we've installed about a hundred and ten beds. The beds are, um, given to the family completely free. They are also given, so it's the bed frame, the mattress, and all of the bedding, and also a lesson to the kiddo on how to make and take care of their bed. And it's for anybody ages three to seventeen. Um, and so, look for some news about that coming in the next couple of months because we're getting trained. Um, the guy that has started it, his name's Dave Wang. He's really involved with CASAN, great human being. And he's read The Handover of the Reigns, and so we're excited to, you know, it was, it was gonna go away. We tried for six months to find somebody else to do it, and, um, and we can't let that program go. So. But if you know anybody with warehouse space in Lewis County, we're looking for space. Because it's a big drain on our volunteers to have to drive to Clarksville to pick up a couple of beds every time they want to install them.
About how big square footage? Do you have any idea how big a room?
I don't want to tell you what size because I'll look at anything at this point. So, if you have any ideas for real, I will come and take a look at it. I want it, I want it to be a space that this community can be proud of. We've got a long list of volunteers, over a hundred people already, that want to come and build beds. Actually, our CTE programs at the high school are, that's probably gonna be one of our first bed builds. It's gonna be in the high school parking lot. Don't quote me on that because I haven't asked you for permission yet. Um, but that, I want that to be one of our first bed builds.
I don't tell nobody.
You know, that's right. Don't be telling anybody. Um, but when you see permission to build beds, that's what it's gonna be for. So. So, if you have ideas on the space, you message me.
Thank you for all you do.
Yeah, thank you. I'm highly proud of it, and, um, we're always open to brainstorming anything, and I'm, I'm very appreciative of the folks that we work with at Lewis County Schools who are doing good things for kids every single day.
Well, you're doing a lot of things, not only for kids, but adults and, and people that's having a little harder.
Yeah.
And it's, it's really a good thing you all do. It really is.
Yeah. Well, thanks for bearing with me. I'm kind of hoarse. I've been, I presented four days last week, and Sunday, and this morning, so kind of hoarse. Thanks for bearing with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
For approval, consider an approved contract between Lewis County Board of Education and Felisa Corley Psychological Educational Testing Services, effective through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Motion for approval.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or aye. Motion carries. Consider an approved Scenario One, two roofs and a boiler, or Scenario Two, three wo, three roofs, as proposed by Energy Savings Group.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
So, Audra Blackwell and her colleagues are here, um, to share some information with you about the two projects that you have to choose from. about the two projects that you have to choose from, and answer any questions that you may have about those projects.
Okay.
Good evening. I've never used this sharing before, so it's gonna share this way. It's not gonna go in the bigger screen mode, so hopefully you can see it. If you can't, I have copies of the presentation. Would you like to have copies?
Sure.
You're okay, okay. So, well, anyway, thank you for having us this evening. The first thing I would like to do is, I'm Audra Blackwell, she's already said that, I'm the Business Development Manager for ESG. I have with me John Top Miller, he's our Engineering Manager for the East Region, and, and Jeff Hallred, he's our Project Manager. He would manage the contractors and the construction of the project. He is from West Virginia, he used to be a Maintenance Director for K-12 Schools. So, he has a lot of experience in managing the projects, and has done about a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of these projects. So, these guys are here, if you have any questions for them, we've got project management and engineering. So, a little bit of what we're gonna talk about, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about ESG, go over performance contracting again, since we haven't been here since October, the Lewis County Schools project, our contract timeline, benefits, and the next steps. So, ESG's been around for thirty years. We have approximately three hundred and sixty-five employees. We're an accredited energy services provider, which is the highest designation that can be achieved through NIESCO, and we have completed about four and a half billion dollars' worth of these projects. And one point five of that four and a half billion is from repeat business. People have had a good experience and had good, you know, experience with these construction projects and so on. They're a single source, turnkey, meaning everything's taken care of from beginning to end, including auditing, engineering, project management, and the guarantee. And we're vendor independent and vendor neutral, meaning we don't sell any particular type of equipment. We can get you anything you want for your schools. And you've heard this before, so it's just kind of a little bit of a review. What is performance contracting? Basically, it's a way to reduce energy and water usage and operation and maintenance costs, and reduce waste, and address your highest priority needs. So, we've worked with the administration here to talk about the highest priority needs in the county. It also addresses deferred maintenance and addresses your infrastructure and master plan needs. So, before the project, say now, you have energy costs and maintenance costs. After a project like this is complete, your energy costs go down, your maintenance costs go down, and the savings that's left over is what pays for your project over time, guaranteed in whole or in part, depending on which project you decide to do. It is a design-build-construction process, so as we're moving forward to develop that contract, that design is complete, and you know how much it's gonna cost you. So, and there's a guarantee of no change orders as well. So, in both scenarios, I think you all have been provided a cash flow and an executive summary. So, in both scenarios, you have lighting improvements at these facilities, and water conservation at these five facilities. Okay, the one thing here on the end, where it says lighting improvements, at the Lewis County High School, the savings from that project that's gonna be done through the SBA has been included in our cash flow. The water conservation projects have been included in the project because it actually provides the payback within the fifteen-year term. So, it is actually providing cash for your project. So, the next slide gives you the two options. So, both projects include that. Hang on a minute, went to the wrong slide. Okay, so scenario one and scenario two, you can see they have some similarity. Both of them provide a partial roof at Robert Upland, and both of the projects provide a gem roof replacement at Jane Lou Elementary. Scenario one actually replaces the boilers at Peterson Central, and scenario two has a roof replacement at Roanoke Elementary. So, that's the difference in the two projects. So, financially, how is it different, is the next slide. Basically, scenario one is approximately a two million dollar, eighty-eight thousand, a hundred and eleven dollar project, and it produces three million, fifty-seven thousand dollars in savings over the fifteen-year term. Scenario two is a two point five million dollar project, and produces three million, forty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars over the fifteen-year term. So, scenario one is budget neutral, doesn't require any money to be put into the project from the county's budget. It is paid for through the energy and operations savings that are guaranteed to you. Scenario two requires forty-six thousand dollars annually to be put into the project from the county. And these financials are based upon a four point six indicative interest rate. So, once we get the official closing date interest rate, that could go down. So, just so you know, that's indicative right now, based upon what we've been told by Huntington Bank. They actually won the first solicitation, so that's where we got the number. Okay, the anticipated timeline, just so you know, and I didn't go over the construction period. Scenario one's eight months, and scenario two is nine months. So, we can have it done within eight months, once the contract is approved, legal reviews complete, and all that kind of thing. And scenario two can be done within nine months. So, the anticipated timeline that we're looking at is basically have the legal review complete within April, and then, once you all decide what you would like to move forward with, consider the contract in April and the financing resolution in April. And let's say all that goes positively, then the construction can start in May of twenty-twenty-five and be complete by January of twenty-twenty-six. So, while I consider doing something like this, what are the benefits? The benefits are that the improvements are paid for by just redirecting your utility bills. You're actually already paying for scenario one by paying your utility bills. Okay, it offsets the capital cost of these improvements. If you looked at scenario two, it's also offsetting the cost of doing the roof at Roanoke Elementary. Annual budget is, you know, the neutral option has been proposed. It reduces your capital and maintenance burden. Also, you have a single source of accountability for the project. You'll have multiple contractors on the project, but you'll have one company to look for to make sure that everything's being done correctly. And if anything is coming up between the contractors, we will work with them to work everything out, do all the paperwork, handle everything on your behalf. And it does increase the building life expectancy and protect the other building assets of those facilities that are being worked on. And it gives Lewis County Schools the best possible facilities for its current students. So, they get the benefits of those improvements now, and it does improve the learning environment. So, basically, that's all I have, and I just want to thank you all for this opportunity, and ask if you have any questions.
Now, is that interest rate, once it's set, is it locked? It stays the same? It doesn't fluctuate?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'm not a financial advisor, I have to say that. And they'll go over that.
I've got a question for treasurer. If we take the forty-seven thousand, does that come out of general fund?
Like you do on scenario two?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Do we have that do this?
Yeah, we would be able to do that.
Without really putting this in a bind?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's forty-seven thousand dollars annually, just not a one-time expense, right?
Yes, for fifteen years.
Okay.
And that's financing it. That just gives you an idea of how much exactly will come out of your budget. That's why it's put that way, so you know exactly how much money will come out of your budget every year.
Okay.
But scenario one?
What's your interest rate?
Zero.
Zero.
Yes.
Zero.
Uh, the interest rate is an indicative rate, and it's set, that cash flow's set at four point six percent. That interest rate will not be finalized until the day of closing, and we have a Director of Finance that solicited for proposals on the national scale on your behalf, and will, you all will consider that at a later date. This model that you've been provided is to help you decide which scenario you would like to go forward with right now. We're, from our advice that has been given to us through the Director of Finance and through Huntington Bank, is they do not believe that it will go above four point six. I mean, that's just all I can say, okay? I can't tell.
It's guaranteed it won't go?
There's no guarantee.
Okay.
No guarantee. It's just that what they have, what they believe, with all the knowledge that they have, it's the best indicative rate that they can give you right now. On the day of closing, you will know for sure what that interest rate is. And when you are given that offer, they'll give you a certain amount of days that they'll hold that interest rate. You know, so the proposals that they gave before, I don't know, did, do you remember Maron, they gave, like, ten days or something like that to accept the proposal, and then?
Yeah.
There's a, there's a timeline, you know, you'll know, you'll know what comes in. But right now, the, the cash flows are really there to give you a tool to decide, what do we want? Do we want to go with option one or option two?
Sure.
That's all it is. It's a model. And it's a pretty, you know, dependable, I would just call it dependable, interest rate that you can use to go by.
I don't have anything for it.
Do you have any questions?
No. We need to make a decision if we're gonna go with option one or two today.
So, the motion right now is to consider one or two.
Mm-hmm.
So, if Mr. Holden is willing to amend his motion, to make a determination between those, we can do that.
Yes. Which scenario would you want to make your amendment to?
What's everybody else think? I mean, yeah, that's what I was saying. I don't, I don't think we can afford to go with that one. I'll make my motion to go with the first one.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Nah, look forward to see what gets done.
Thank you for your help.
And thank you all.
Appreciate y'all coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for the doughnuts.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you, Audra.
Thank you.
Consider and approve Lumos Network LLC DBA Segura Master Service Agreement for Internet Services for Lewis County Schools in an amount of five thousand dollars. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider and approve annual memorandum of understanding between WVU Extension and Lewis County Board of Education, July one, twenty-twenty-five through June thirty, twenty-twenty-six. Do you have a motion?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider and approve the following adjustments to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school calendar, May twenty-nine, twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five, last day of instructional term, February twenty, twenty-twenty-five, inclement weather day. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Policies on the second reading. Policy chapter thirty-one thirteen, conflict of interest. Policy two, chapter eleven thirty, conflict of interest. Policy three, chapter forty-one thirteen, conflict of interest. Policy four, chapter sixty-one ten, federal funds. Chapter, policy five, chapter sixty-one eleven, internal controls. Policy six, chapter sixty-one twelve, cash management of grants. Policy seven, pol, policy seven, chapter sixty-one fourteen, cost of principles, spending federal funds. Policy eight, chapter sixty-three twenty-five, procurement federal funds and grants. Policy nine, chapter sixty-five fifty, travel payment and reimbursements. Policy ten, chapter seventy-three ten, disposition of personal property. And policy eleven, chapter seventy-four fifty, property inventory. Do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Approved minutes from previous board meeting, March ten, twenty-twenty-five, regular board meeting. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consent agenda, out-of-state meeting request, Jennifer Eiler-Chaperon, JROTC to Virginia and North Carolina, March fourteen, twenty-twenty-five through March sixteen, twenty-twenty-five. Do you have a motion to approve?
So move. I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Personnel, do you have a motion to approve as provided on board book?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Finance, payment of bills and payroll, eight hundred ninety thousand, seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider and approve monthly financial report for February twenty-twenty-five. Do you have a motion? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question on this. Federal Perkins, Maron, what, what's, what's this transfer about?
Um, it's not a transfer. It's a, it's the budget to set for the twenty-twenty-five federal Perkins grant we get right here.
So, this is for next year?
No, this is for the budget we get this year.
Okay. And we've used, and we've used it all?
No, not yet.
Okay, but we will?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider and approve budget general entries for February twenty-twenty-five. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed nay, motion carries. Reports and discussions, facilities and construction.
First of all, one of those, the, the nice comments that Ms. Palmer had, but it's Donnie Rouse, T. Cutwright, Stan Marlowe, the guys that do the work, that's who gets it done in this county. So, for the updates, Jane Lou, we got Graham Simon coming to fix the kitchen drain issue next week while the kids are out in the cafeteria. Skylight work at Roanoke should be next week while the kids are out. Peterson, we will hopefully have the new gravel parking lot in front of the school, uh, between the road and the bus loop right there, done by the end of next week as well. Leading Creek, we'll get the floor finish applicator that was asked about last meeting. I'll, I'll order it later this week, and price in a new building to replace the one that's rotting out there right now. At the high school, we opened bids last week, and we'll have that on the next agenda for the HVAC replacement there. And we're working on getting the scoreboard fixed at the baseball field. At the middle school, room three-ten, a train's supposed to be sending a technician down to hopefully fix that tomorrow. And then, also tomorrow at eleven AM, there is a statewide tornado drill that'll be happening, so.
That's, that's the first time they've done something like that. Do you, you ever remember that day?
Tornado drill?
Tornado.
No, I remember nuclear bomb drills.
Yeah?
I mean, I. Every building had a yellow sign, and there were black and yellow CD, and that's where you went to that room and saw what was in them green military cans, candy or water. Kind of my age. Did we have any windstorm damage?
Uh, yes, scoreboard.
Just, just the scoreboard, otherwise?
That's the only thing I've heard.
Okay, that's good.
Keep up the good work, Pat.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Consider and approve a recommendation to move forward with ADI for a partial HVAC replacement at Peterson Central Elementary School for a total of eight hundred and five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars pending SBA approval. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Superintendent updates.
Um, just a couple of things really quickly. Our students from Lewis County High School presented at Leadership Lewis. We were able to share some information, do a little bit of portrait of a graduate work with the folks that were there, and... And, um, they all seemed very eager to find ways to help support our school system and ways to help our kids. So, um, hoping that we can get some good relationships coming out of there and some support from our business community. Um, we had a meeting with Hope Gas, uh, last week and talked about possibilities for CTE, uh, opportunities for our kiddos, um, through them, and they've encouraged us to reach out to some other folks as well. Uh, so we're in the process of doing that. Uh, I have a meeting with the, um, new leader at Stonewall Jackson Memorial Hospital. I meet with her tomorrow to have conversations about our relationship and, um, ways that we can help them and they can help us. Um, I have an upcoming meeting with Dave Barker that was here a few weeks ago, uh, from the Trades Union, and so he's invited me to join some meetings with some other folks that have pre-apprenticeship programs in place so that we can gather some more information, so that we can potentially get that in place for our students here. Um, we had some really good work on the county strategic plan, so I wanna make sure that I thank my team for their work on that today. Um, and then I want to also give a shout out to Kim Butcher, the, um, cook at, at Roanoke. Um, during the windstorm, they lost power, and by the time we knew there was no power, um, she had already been to the school, moved the food or milk out of the coolers and put them in a place that the generator would protect them. So, um, she went above and beyond and before anybody asked her to. So I just wanna make sure that, that she's recognized. We have staff all over the county that do those kinds of things that we don't know about, so, um, we just, we appreciate what they're doing.
Great, thank you. Mr. Holden?
Yes, uh, I understand that, uh, through this Department of Education, the federal, uh, some of the cuts is coming, and I think we'll find out more about it when we go to Fred Everly tomorrow. Some of their programs is gonna be affected, I think, I think they're under the, like the, uh, adult dri- truck driving, and I've seen there's some other things, I think, will bring us up more of the date tomorrow, what?
There's potential.
The more, the, more of the adult programs, it's gonna be cut a lot of, so there is gonna be some cuts coming. So when I find out more about it, I'll report it back to the next meeting. Do you wanna say that, uh, you know, with the band, the band done real good, the three, uh, students that, uh, got their honors this season? And the same as, uh, you know, the basketball and the football and, uh, cheerleading and everybody. Uh, wrestling, uh, seems like that we've done real good this year. So I wanna thank all the coaches and the parents and everybody that, uh, made it a team effort, so. That's all I have.
Mr. White?
I attended the CTE leadership, uh, I got to see three different programs, and it was really impressive, our students and our staff down there. And the presentations they made, and they were very professional about it, and it's hard for kids to get up there and do that. These kids were polished and did a great job at it, and were, it was really fun to watch, and, uh, those kids are gonna do well. Secondly, you know, if you're not watching this legislative action this year, you should be. Because there's changes coming down the pike, good, bad, irrationally, but they're coming. And they're gonna affect us all sooner or later, probably sooner. And as individuals, we need to pay attention to this. You vote, you do everything, so you need, you need to follow up on this and watch this very closely, how it affects education. And finally, uh, we had a program here years ago, and I know COVID happened, but there's a program called Open Gym. Coach Myers and Coach Stout ran it for years down at the middle school. Kids would come in there at eight o'clock in the morning. I had kids, I know they wouldn't get up all summer, but they would get up to go to the Opens Gym. I think that's something as a board, if we could consider bringing back to help our kids in our community, it'd be a great thing for, moving forward, helping our community and getting our kids involved. It was a good program, and, uh, I really think it's something we need to look at to bring back.
Very good. Mr. Bush?
Uh, just, just a sad note, uh, Frank Gerard passed away recently. Uh, forty years I taught, I worked with Frank. He, he was, I considered Frank a kind of a Renaissance man, because not only was he a coach, he was a carpenter, he, uh, was a businessman. Uh, he devoted a lot of time to Habitat for Humanity, and he was just a, a, a good person to hang around with, so, to condolences to the family of Frank Gerard.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Um, not, not a whole lot to say tonight, I did wanna, did wanna mention a couple things. Um, I heard Brian talking about the baseball scoreboard. We also have to think about the, uh, the football scoreboard, and know if you're listening to this, um, we could stand some help from a contractor or somebody out there potentially to help us with the press box up there. It's, it's in, uh, pretty deplorable condition if you go in and, uh, and check it out. So those are things that maybe the community can help us with, and if, uh, we could look into that a little bit, it, it might be a good idea, and otherwise we'll try to come up some, with some funding for, for the scoreboard and some other things. Um, I was, I was pleased to see all the kids tonight and all the, all the academic awards, the talented. Do I, I, I mean, we got a lot of talent amongst our, amongst our kids. Um, and you guys know that I live the, the, the legislative process about, about every day, and I can't reiterate anymore what, what Mr. White has, uh, has alluded to this evening. Um, there are bills popping up on agendas that, that have been introduced for years and haven't, haven't moved anywhere that are moving. So, so times are, times are changing for, for public ed, uh, for sure. Um, I don't know how many of those bills will pass in the final analysis, but, but we better play, pay really, really close attention. And I'm paying some, some attention and trying to earn, earn a living at the same time, but, but, you know, there's one on the House, uh, Education Agenda today that just shocked me that it was even there. Um, might, might be a good one, might not be a good one, depends, depends on what you think of, but, your thoughts on it, but, but, um, lots of change coming, so, um, with that, I'll save my powder for next time, I think.
Thank you. So I have just a, a, a few things, or a few requests. I'd, I'd like to know how we're standing or what we look like as far as data on our attendance and truancy. If, if at some point we could get some information on that, I, I think that would be great. And, uh, another recommendation, but I'd, I'd wanna defer to, to my colleagues. I'd like to see the CTE state rep come in and, and maybe do a presentation for us regarding financial reporting, regarding the, the state of the state of CTE statewide. Uh, I think that that would be something that everybody else feels it'd be beneficial to, to get some state authority relevant to the CET, just to kind of, CTE to give us a, a little bit of a overview of, of where we're at. That would a- again be up to everybody else. Uh, to dovetail off of what Mr. White said, you know, we were, we're very blessed in order to, to get this levy passed. And we may already be doing it, but if you all recall years ago, the, the track, that was a place where folks walked around and, and, you know, a gathering place for responsible folks. And I, I don't know what our current status is with it. I don't know if the gates are locked, and I understand the whole lording issue with, with it, but, you know, I, I, I feel as if that we should explore a safe way to where folks can go and, and, and take in our, our facilities, particularly an, an outside venue like our track. I, I certainly feel that it's, it's worth exploring for sure. And, uh, the final thing I wanna say is thank you, ESG. We're looking forward to this and, and we're hopeful, I mean, this is trial. Uh, I, I can't speak for everybody, but, you know, this could be a, a very long-term collaboration, so thank you all for coming. Well, having said that, our next meeting is April fourteenth. Thank you, Dr. Stewart, and, uh, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.